Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to call this RPC meeting to order Friday, February 28, 2020, and I'll have Pam call the roll.
Yes, thank you. All right. Joan Dykstra.
Here.
Charles Smith.
Here.
Tammy Twilling-Bogus.
Here.
Patrick Brown. Deb Frank-Finan. Will Kyles. Steve Sommers.
Here.
Jim Goss. Diane Marlin.
Here.
Dennis Roberts.
Here.
Haroldo Rosales. Katina Welter.
Here.
Anna Oken.
We have a call.
Thank you. We need approval of the agenda and addenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some.
Second. All right. Any discussion and corrections? All right, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, audience participation. I believe this is the part where we welcome Pius to our midst, and thank you so much for coming. We talked last week about all the different, the funding and how everything's going to get paid, and so I will just defer to either Delitzo or whomever else to get us started.
Sure, Madam Chair. We did have a meeting with the, is it Deputy Treasurer?
Chief Deputy Treasurer, yes, that's the, and Acting Treasurer. The emphasis on the acting.
Acting Treasurer. I think the day after, we had the Commissioners' meeting to discuss the FY 2018 audit, and so he will provide the best he can in terms of where they are in the Treasurer's office. One of the reasons why we met with them was not just about FY 18 audit, but also the concerns that were expressed in that meeting about the FY 19 audit, which has not yet been started. So I will defer to the Acting Treasurer.
All right, thank you. Well, you got your note from Mr. Danos. He referred to the collapse of the Treasurer's office. I think that's an appropriate description. I came in after that collapse, so I'm dealing with issues from that, and there are many. One of them, of course, is that the, many of the accounts have not been reconciled, including RPC, which is probably the most complex account to reconcile because you've got money coming from many sources, and they are posted sometime, like for example, Health and Human Services, you get lots of money from them, they're posted up to five different accounts, so it just makes it more difficult to reconcile. However, it is still reconcilable. So where are we now? Well, I'll be blunt, they're not reconciled, but we've made progress. We have tabulated all of the, almost all of the items that are on the abuse statements. We know where they came from, which county came from. Now we're checking to make sure that we have all, they're all properly posted in the ledger account. And we have started filling out the rubric that the county uses for reconciliation. We've done that through October, and by Monday, I'll have October, November, and December done too. That'd be of 2019 and 2020. And from there on, we just began to try to look for what we're missing, and you know, what doesn't, obviously, what accounts were, that we can't find that correlate from the ledger to abuse statement. I can tell you that certain months, like August, I think, none of the items in the abuse statement were posted during that month. So all those had to carry forward. And that actually kept going probably till, I think, October started to catch up. Initially, back in October when I first hired, Chris Ward asked me to try to cor, try to not correlate, but to reconcile accounts through June. I attempted to do that, finally couldn't do it because there were so many things that had not been posted. It was really impossible. Well, you could do reconciliation, but everything would be brought forward, so it really would not be a very useful reconciliation. So at that time then, it was handed off to the owner who's, the Clifton Larson accountant who was hired for about a month, and I think mostly December she worked on it. And after that, Jewel picked it up. And then lately, Jewel and I have been both working on it, so it's sort of been a tag-team process. Obviously, we have no choice. We have to get this reconciled by the end of March because, again, the next audit's coming forward. I think we can do that. Questions?
Questions for him.
I would say staff from RPC has been very cooperative.
It's Diane.
It's your understanding that there won't be an appointment for the Treasurer's office?
You know, you know more about that than I do.
Well, I would just go on record, I would go on record saying I am extremely disappointed and frankly appalled that this appointment is not being made as soon as possible. I consider this really an emergency in the Treasurer's office, and I don't understand why the delay.
I mean, one issue is-
And not even knowing who the applicants are.
I mean, one issue is that we're down a staff person.
Exactly.
And so I'm sort of doing double time for-
I think the public deserves to know who the applicants are, are they qualified, and why this delay is being made.
I can tell you what the qualifications are. You have to be, live in Champaign County, Champaign County, and you have to be a registered voter.
No, I know that, but of the applicants-
And a Democrat.
Of the applicants who have applied.
Steve.
Just for clarification, the Treasurer's staff, including the Treasurer, is a total of five people, correct?
Correct. Year-round. Sometimes you hire a staffer, a half-timer during the year.
General, you're operating down one staffer and half for some time.
Twenty percent.
So I think one of the things we asked last time was, do you need emergency help, temporary help, and is Dan Welch, see if I get this right, Dan Welch, is he, how much has he helped, and is he still helping?
Well, Dan, both Dan and Barb Blue were hired last fall. I think they worked during the months of, well, I know they worked the months of September, and then living in October, when I came on board, they left then. I communicate with Dan on a regular basis, and sometimes with Barb also, as needed. It comes down to, I don't know if there's, the money's there. I don't think it is. I mean, you have to have money to hire people, as you all know.
We have Laurel's position, if she's not holding that position.
Right, that's, yeah, I haven't looked into that. I can, but I'm not, I'm not optimistic, because I think that money has been overspent, because for several months last year, we were paying for two chief deputies. October and, that's two months we were.
As Mayor Marlin said, this is an emergency situation.
Well, then you have to have the county board's going to be cooperative and transfer money. I haven't looked into that. The biggest thing to do is to get a point of new treasurer. That way we could get another person. That's, ball's really in their corner.
All right, any other questions for him concerning going forward? All right.
I just, just so I understand, you're confident that reconciliation will be done in time to get the 2019 audit done in a timely manner?
I think we have no choice.
Okay.
That's my best answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Just to point out, and I know the Acting Treasurer is aware, it's also not just for the, the single audit. We also do get reviewed by various funding sources. I know workforce is supposed to be here.
Yeah, so we have our workforce programmatic and fiscal monitoring in the next, well, Monday they'll be here for the programmatic, and then the fiscal they're going to do at the end of March. We also have the Illinois Department of Human Services coming here for a full administrative review. So they will be requesting those records, which I think you've got that request.
When's the, the second one coming? I got notice about the wheel, wheel.
Pardon me?
What about the?
The workforce, yeah. They're going to do the programmatic next week, starting Monday. The entrance exam is, entrance monitoring review is at 11:00, and the Regional Director for Workforce Development from the state will be here as well. So, and then they're going to subsequently do the fiscal review. So we do have those reviews coming up.
I understand.
Federal Highway is coming in April.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Federal Highway is coming for a review in April.
Okay, in April, okay.
Yeah. And, and we expect HHS to be here because we had the early Head Start expansion grant, and they've indicated that they're going to be here sooner rather than later. So I expect that in the next three months, and that'll be a really comprehensive review.
All right, thank you, Pius. I guess I speak for all of us to say that whatever help we can give, or whatever pressure we can bear, or whatever we can do, the, yeah, Head Start, well, Head Start, you know, and all the other funding is, we can't have a bad mark.
I understand, I understand, Chris, I know that.
Okay. We appreciate you coming. Yes, Steve.
Just a comment, since I'm a lone county board member here, we have received as a board no request for additional funding for the Treasurer's office, neither from Sheriff Rosales or from executive level.
Okay, that's good to know. Pius, do you have a comment on that?
I'm not, again, I've only been in charge for a month, nominally in charge for a month, so, and part of the time I was sick, so I need to look into see what we can do. But also, I don't know, I'm not sure Dan or Barb would really want to work. I can tell you that-
It'd have to be them, I mean, somebody who knows how to count.
The problem is that, you know, it takes time for anybody to come in and get used to what you're working with. Like the person hired from, owner from Clifton Larson, half her time was just, she was here four weeks, half the time she was just getting used to all the different accounts, things like that.
And that's why we are just so concerned, is because, you know, we say we don't have the funding to get the extra help, and then if we do, and when we do get extra help, it's going to take a while, so we're, I will say I'm panicked, but I'm very concerned.
People have asked me what can be done, I said, "Well, you know, we've lost a year in time. How do we get that back?"
Double time.
A year that we didn't get things done. I mean, how do you get, how do you return time? It's impossible, and that's the sad thing about it.
Well, I guess it would be double time. Yes, Tammy.
My question, I, I agree. You know, the year's been lost, and, and, you know, we have to do what we can, or you guys have to do what you can to get us where we need to be to, you know, get things right. But moving forward, I know just from our last meeting last week, it, you know, it sounded like, you know, everybody's like, "Well, we can't do," you know, I'm talking about oversight and how we make things better as we move forward so that we don't get in another situation like this after a next election, or after, you know, you know, various different things change at the county board or the county offices there. How do we, where's the oversight? I mean, county board kind of acts like, "Well, our hands are tied because we can't do this, and we don't hire that office," but then if we have something happen like has happened now, you know, it's like you guys are all playing catch-up now. Why did it get so far out of hand to, here we are now in, you know, March, trying to have such a major catch-up, when it sounds to me like this, you know, this didn't happen overnight. Why, why wasn't this addressed last June even?
That's a tough question to answer. My mother told me, if you speak about somebody in public, you should always say good things. So it's hard for me to say anything about that. Situation at the Treasurer's Office, I think, was unique, hopefully not be repeated. I mean, the Treasurer answers to the people, it's elected position, so that's the oversight.
And that's what I said, it's very concerning to me, it's like, you know, we worked through the issues this time around, and then where do we go from here?
Hopefully, the next Treasurer will not, not have some of the characteristics of the last Treasurer. Probably, that's what I can say politely.
Diane, you had a comment? No. Steve.
In terms of comment, Tammy, as far as the board, the board has really very little levers over county-wide elected officials. We control their budget, but we cannot dictate what they do within their offices. That's, that's just simply out of our domain. As far as how things got to the way they are, I do know in the office, there was an issue from the very onset where the chief deputy left when our new Treasurer took office, and the replacement, it was an internal replacement, that chief deputy was there for a while, and then went on FMLA leave and was gone. So the office has been down about 20% really for the, probably the biggest part of last year, if my timeline is accurate on that. So you're asking how things got to where they are, that's part of the reason how things got to where they are.
Right. And I guess my biggest concern is, is moving forward, what kind of oversight can be put in place so that that office is not allowed to have that happen again? I mean, I guess to me, yes, I mean, I don't want to get into pointing fingers either, but, but yes, it seems to me like if it was so understaffed, that maybe should have been a priority, is to get the staffing so that they could do the job, and get the proper staffing. You know, if you have everybody quit on you, or whatever, you know, which I've, you know, heard that, it's like, then, then your job, when you're in that position, is you got to get out there and get the right people to do the job, because for one, it's a bad reflection on you if things collapse as they have, but, but, you know, to me that, I guess I'm trying to figure out where the oversight is for everybody in Champaign County.
Steve.
I think one issue with regard to the chief deputy being on FMLA leave was that, my understanding is that Treasurer Pressing was given, it's not legal advice, it would have been from the Executive's Office, that she was not able to post that position, even in a temporary position status, because of the requirements of FMLA leave. I don't believe that's necessarily an accurate legal opinion, but that was what she was operating under, so it's, it's hard to hire a replacement if you can't recruit or post a position to replace the person.
I'm going to say something, then, Chuck, and I'm not shooting the messenger in any way, shape, or form, but we, but that is, you know, that's unacceptable, those are excuses. And secondly, being accountable, the Treasurer and the auditor and the county clerk, yes, we're taxpayers ourselves. They're accountable to us, they're accountable to this organization, they're accountable for getting the job done. So sometimes we say, "Oh, well, we can't say what the Treasurer should do because they're independent." Well, by golly, we are taxpayers too, and we're an organization that expects excellence in our offices, and I'm not shooting you or you, but I just, I think the public finds that, that reasoning about, well, the chief, the deputy at FMLA, I just find, they find it incredibly unacceptable, incredibly unacceptable. Well, it's my, only my second time to chair, so you might, you might want to recall me after this. Chuck.
Again, I'm seeing also, Pius, that it's a lack of leadership here, because I don't understand why, if we recognize the problem so far back, that the request wasn't made to the county board for additional funding to take this down outside source to reconcile the records. So this is, needless to say, this is not an acceptable practice, and I think that request needs to be made directly to the county board for additional funding to farm some of this workload out so that we can get this back on our regular timetable.
I can do that, but I, again, it's going to be up to the county board.
I'm sorry?
I can do that, but I mean, really, the county board has to agree to transfer that money, and I'm not optimistic.
Well-
Oh, that itself would be disappointing.
And I think actually Laura Pressing tried to do that last fall, and it was turned down.
It was.
Was it October, was that November, October? She asked for additional funding, it was turned down then.
That is correct.
By the board?
By the board, that's, that's correct.
Wow.
I can't recall what it was for, but-
I don't know, you can, you can go look and see who voted in which way, that's public record, so. I voted in favor, actually.
Well, we don't have the other, other side of the aisle to explain whatever that all transpired, so I would just say that. Well, Pius-
And the other question is, who do you hire? Who do you hire? Again, that person, it takes so long for a person to get used to, you know, you know, where these numbers are coming from, so on and so forth. So I mean, that's, that's, it's a conundrum. So my viewpoint, I just have to work as hard as possible to get caught up as much as possible.
I think the appointment has to be made as soon as possible. I mean, that's, that, this, you know, it would take weeks for somebody to figure out the system, and, and that's almost a waste of money at this time, but long-term, a qualified person has to be appointed to this position. So would it help if this organization sent a letter to the county board, or to the Chair?
Well, it's in the Chair's hand, I think, really.
Yep, it's entirely in the Chair's hands.
So we as a board could send a letter, just urging them to make the appointment before the primary? When's the next county board meeting?
That would be the second Tuesday of next month.
Well, we have to have a special meeting.
That's right.
Which is fine.
Which I could do, which I could do.
This is a crisis.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's only a few days before the primary, as a matter of fact.
It could be a two-sentence letter, you know?
I mean, it'll, how many days before the primary is the county, committee of the whole?
What is it about a meeting?
I've got a calendar, somebody's got to have a calendar here.
Committee of the whole meets on March 10.
Pardon?
March 10.
March 10th is committee of the whole, so it's early. I think the county board meeting's like 21st or 22th.
I don't know that one.
Well, the 10th is a Tuesday.
I think our input would be important. I think they should hear us, because we have a lot of funds that are, you know, hanging in the balance concerning-
Indeed. Yes, Diane.
And they don't have to wait till the county board, regular county board meeting, they can hold a special meeting. You can hold it on Monday, you know, if you want.
The Cal's on the 10th, the primary's on the 17th, the regular county board meeting is on the 19th.
You could make the appointment on the 1st.
Could do that.
Okay, all right.
Actually, that's a standard.
So the directive is?
Give it a directive.
Yes, I'll make a motion. I would move that the Regional Planning Commission Board send a letter to the county board chair, and copying the county board members, requesting that appointment made for Treasurer immediately.
Second?
I'll second.
Chuck? Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Pius.
Okay, I'm going to come back next month for an update.
It would be great if you came back until things were resolved, that would be, that would be welcome. Diane.
I would second the thank you. Thank you to you and George.
Thank you, Pius.
All right, moving on. We have minutes, RPC draft meeting minutes of December 13, 2019. I need a motion to approve.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and we now have the consolidated financial reports. Elizabeth, or Betty, do you want to say anything before we make a motion?
Sure. So you have November 30, and our fund balance at that point was a little, just shy of 10.1 million. December of 31 was sent to you electronically, I think Pam passed those out. It increased to 10.965. As of January, it was 10.5. So this is very typical, given this time period of the year. Our receivables at the end of January were just, just under 730,000, which, given the volume that goes through this organization, that would be also typical for this period.
All right, any questions or comments for her? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
I'll second.
Any discussion, corrections? Seeing none, I'll have the clerk call the roll. Pam. I'm sorry.
We don't need a roll.
Oh, don't need a roll, all right. I'm on a roll. All right. List of bills? Betty?
Yes, so this volume of bill processing is, is large. I think a lot of this reflects our startup at the Champaign West Early Childhood Facility, because we're now fully operational there with seven additional classrooms. It also reflects additional emergency shelter and utility payments. We have a significant increase in LIHEP participants, as well as workforce participants, but there's nothing unusual to report here.
Any questions for her, comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept and place on file the list of bills for December 2019 and January 2020.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Second, but Chuck? Any other discussion or questions? All right, seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, action item, non-federal share waiver for grant 05HP000138. And I am going to defer to Betty.
Sure. So we are required to have a 20% non-federal share for our early Head Start expansion, all of our federal early Head Start and Head Start grants. This expansion grant included also non-federal share for our startup portion, but because of the delay in getting the startup going at this new facility that we recently leased, and state regulatory delays, we had to have DCFS approval, Fire Marshal approvals, public health approvals, it just took longer than we thought. And that was delayed till October of 19, 2019, and then March 9 will be fully operational in the remaining seven classrooms. So we did not get the federal, non-federal share that we're required to have, so we're requesting that the federal government give us a waiver, a one-time waiver. We don't believe there will be any subsequent issues securing that non-federal share, so we're asking for $470,930 for the operational budget portion, and $170,120 for the startup portion. It's not unusual for them to see these types of waivers, but again, we don't anticipate that this will be a continuing request. So I request that the board approve this waiver so that we can submit this to the regional office.
All right, to get it on the table, do I hear a motion to approve the non-federal share waiver for grant 05HP000138 as presented? There's a motion?
Some move.
Second. All right, now discussion or questions?
I'm sorry.
Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, FY '20 budget amendments, and we're back to Betty.
So we have two additions to the FY '20 budget. The first is the addition of Department 854, the Smart Energy Design Assistance Center at the University of Illinois, is contracted with Ameren to assess and quantify workforce development needs for companies that provide energy efficiency and renewable energy services. They've asked to partner with us to provide technical assistance to them, so this would be an increased appropriation and revenue of $25,000 for that project. I believe Delitzo has more details about that particular initiative. And the second one is our Early Childhood Fund. We need to create a new department childcare program. This would be an increased revenue and appropriations of $698,511. This is the result of increased additional state funding to support two more preschool ages three to five classrooms for 34 children for 10 hours a day. We believe this will continue to address the outstanding waiting list, and we have full state support to, to finance these two classrooms. So these would be additions to the FY '20 budget.
All right, Delitzo, you had other comments?
Just real quickly, I think I've reported before to the Commissioners that the energy efficiency field is a growing field. I think right now it's probably about a $7 billion field nationwide, but here in Illinois, we have what's called the Future Energy Jobs Act, which was passed in 2016, and as a result of that legislation, there are a lot of resources that have been made available to do energy efficiency work. We're going to talk about solar energy initiatives, and so the challenge that I think a lot of organizations that do energy efficiency work is finding people to actually work in that field, and we experience the same challenges here, the RPC, with our weatherization program. And so this idea actually came from the RPC to partner with the university and look at ways to address the skills gap that exists within the energy efficiency arena. And so we're very happy to partner with them, and hopefully this will help organizations like ours be able to recruit and retain professionals that have an interest in working in this field.
All right, to get it on the table, do I hear a motion to approve the FY '20 budget amendments as presented?
Some move.
Second.
All right, any discussion or questions for the gang? That was easy. All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, Head Start, early Head Start, oh, I did want to ask a question. Where are those classrooms?
They'll be at the new Champaign West facility, 103 South Country Fair. That building is just, just to the west of the Social Security Administration, so that's where those two classrooms will be housed.
I live right across the street, for those who don't know it, from Head Start in Savoy, and so I see the kids come out at recess time, and they're all screaming and yelling, and I just, being a former teacher, that's music to my ears, when kids are screaming and yelling and running around. So, thank you. All right, Brandy? Oh, wait, she's not here.
Brandy's actually not here, so...
Right, I think she's included a written report here, and I believe that, and she had another conflicting appointment. She asked that you approve and place her report on file.
All right. Do I have a motion to accept and place on file the Head Start, early Head Start management reports, including financials and service area reports dated November 19th, 2019, and January 20th, 2020? Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Second? Any questions, comments?
Just one quick comment. We will be sending out to you very soon an invitation to the open house for the facility that Betty has been talking about in West Champaign. We have now completed the build-out of the additional classrooms, and so it's a total of 14 classrooms in that building. And we're looking at, what, April or May for the open house?
Right. Early spring, just to make sure that we're fully staffed and that all, we've handled everything and that we can ensure that all elected officials will be able to participate and view this wonderful facility. It'll be spring.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, program division updates.
So we've begun contract negotiations with AFSMI. In fact, we had that last evening. So that has just started. We began that in January. We expect that's gonna take quite a bit of effort in the coming months. And as I mentioned earlier, we have a number of monitoring visits that are upcoming in the next two months. So staff are busy preparing for those. And finally, we're continuing discussions with the Champaign Park District and their architects about our potential partnership on the Martin Center, which I believe we had a study session about that. So we're still reviewing that possibility.
Betty? Let's see, human resources? Do we have a report?
Yes.
Betty, do you want to take this?
Of course.
Okay. Thank you all. The personnel reports were... They mess us up all the time, no problem. The personnel reports included in your packet, were included in your packet for a few. The reports reflect new hires, transfers and exits of the organization for the period of January 15th through February 18th. Our team has been success, has successfully hired approximately 16 employees during the reporting period. And we have 17 candidates in process slated to come onboard within the next couple of weeks. So we are still recruiting, recruiting, recruiting. The main focus, of course, is the Early Childhood Program to make sure that the, the brand-new facility is up and running, so. Plans are in place for summer youth employment again this year. RPC will be collaborating with the City of Champaign, Care4U, Champaign School District, Urbana School District, and Rantoul School District to offer this valuable program for job training for several youth of the community again this year. So we're excited. The payroll and human resources department participate tremendously in the summer youth program by providing training to the students on how to prepare for their first day on the job, you know, learn about those social security cards, securities, I-9 tax forms, resume reviewing. We also partner with Central Illinois Human Resources Group to, to get HR professionals out there in the high schools here in the next couple of months to get the students ready for a successful job training program. Very exciting. We work with our payroll and fiscal department to make sure all the kids get, the students get paid over the summer. So we are ramping up for a busy season again. The RPC is also collaborating with the Central Illinois Human Resource Group to host the Spring Chambana Job Fair. The job fair will be held April 29th, and we're just starting to get those details together, so stay tuned. Typically, at that job fair, there's usually over 100 employers who participate in that job fair, as well as around 500 job seekers attend the job fair. So every year, that's a, it's a very successful event for which we will be working with the WIOA, Workforce Investment Opportunity Act professionals, where they will be assisting with identifying job training, education, and employers to, to help get people employed, so. And help those employers get those positions filled. Finally, April 29th's gonna be a busy day around here, because on April 29th, again, the agents, RPC will be hosting our employee, all-agency-wide employee recognition event. So getting excited for that as well. And I'd be happy to address any questions today.
Anything for Becky? Thank you for that report. Lisa?
Good morning. Today, I included a little bit of data about two of the programs that we have. So I'm gonna highlight those today. We do a homeless prevention rent assistance program. We've been doing this for many years. This last year, we actually implemented a county-wide approach that involved working with Cunningham Township and also the City of Champaign Township. The data that you have before you is specific to the funds that we administer that are state funds for rent assistance. We were provided $105,000 to cover our rent assistance program. Currently, as of February 5th, we have remaining $24,000, close to $25,000. Just in the first month of the third quarter, the month of January, we actually provided $18,000 in rent assistance. So as you can imagine, there's a high need for this service. Just alone, we received 150 applications, but we only were assisting 104. So we do a process to make sure that we're being good stewards of the funds, making sure that if we're going to assist someone, that we're not just kicking the can, that this is going to actually help them to remain housed and not eventually they're going to be moved along anyway. So we have other ways that we can help households in those situations. The minimum amount of funds that we provide was $226. The maximum was $2,100. And the average assistance to households is usually $700 to $900. We actually do follow-up for these households also to make sure that what we're doing is making an impact. So we follow up 90 days after we've assisted them, and then again, 180 days. At our 90-day follow-up, we found that 90%, 90% of households remained housed, which we feel is quite successful. 10% of those, we were unable to contact. So they very well may have also remained housed. 86 remained housed, 86% remained housed at 180 days. So those are some highlights related to the homeless prevention work that we're doing. On the second page in your packet, you'll see data that has been pulled related to the weatherization that we've done between 2015 and 2019, so the last five years. We broke it down by the specific towns, cities that the weatherization occurred in. We did a total of 187 homes over those five years. Each year, we have approximate, we have funds to support weatherization for approximately 40 households per year. So the funding that we get from the state supports, on average, 40 households per year. That, that ranges, right? It depends on the households that present and the amount of measures that go into each household. So those are some highlights of those two programs. Delitzo also mentioned some of the solar work that we're hoping to move into. We, I think I mentioned at the last meeting that we are going to be embarking upon a weatherization project of a multifamily in Urbana. That is the homestead apartments in Urbana. So next week, a team of individuals will go into the multifamily and evaluate that for weatherization. So that will be receiving some energy efficiency impact work. It'll also be evaluated for a solar project that the state will help us with. So those are some highlights of what's going on in my division, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Diane?
On the, on page 166, the chart of the homeless assistance. Do families with children receive priority? Is there a, how do you, how do you, are there priorities assigned?
So with the homeless prevention, it's a rent assistance program. So the idea is that there are households intact. It's singles, and it's any household that's in need of rent assistance. There's no prioritization. It's those that present their pre-screen to evaluate whether we can invest funds to make, to make it sure that they remain housed. And if they are, then we work with them and their landlord to pay the rent and keep them housed.
Are these folks on the verge of eviction? Or you try to get them, they're on the...
A number of them, they have five-day notices. They don't have to have a court eviction, because usually when they get to the court eviction, the amount of funds that it takes to avoid eviction are very, very large. So oftentimes, they have five-day evictions, or, I mean, five-day notices. We don't require a five-day notice, because our program is a hardship-type of program. So if someone would have a, they're, they're employed, but they have a medical situation, they're hospitalized for a week, and they lose pay for, say, a week. That can get someone behind in rent. They can document that hardship. We're able to assist them with that rent and keep them going.
How many of the referrals from Urbana come through the township office?
Numbers, I'm not, I'm not gonna speak to, because I'd probably get it wrong. But with the county-wide approach, anyone can present at either the township offices or our walk-in sites. We do a pre-screening. And then if they are in the Cunningham Township jurisdiction, they then complete their application and do their rent assistance with Cunningham. Same thing for City of Champaign. If they're in that jurisdiction, then they work with City of Champaign, and we cover everyone else. If funds would go low, or there's a situation where Cunningham Township or City of Champaign Township couldn't help a household, then we assist, because we're countywide.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
Yeah, I actually had the very same question about that, because we know that Cunningham Township is pretty proactive in supplying rental assistance and emergency assistance. But it sounds like the program that you provide is more immediate assistance than the process that Cunningham Township goes through as far as evaluating?
Actually, we, we, we actually use the exact, we worked collectively, and we have a common process. So we're all using the same approach. So the idea is that they, no matter where they, they go for assistance, that the process is the same. There's probably a little bit of difference, but for the most part, it's the same.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you. That's real information.
Yes, Chuck?
Lisa, can you tell me, what type of information do you have about the solar application? And what type of population are we trying to reach with that program?
So specifically with the solar that we're embarking on next week, that is specific to this multifamily. Delitzo and I had, Delitzo and I had a meeting earlier this week with a group that's doing Illinois Solar For All. So the idea is, there's, I'm probably gonna, you jump in whenever you want, because I fumble sometimes. In Urbana particularly, they're going to be creating a solar farm. And there's the opportunity to enroll, or subscribe is the word that they use, up to 1,000 households to then have benefit from that solar generation, and then to have credits on their power utility bills.
Yep, that's right.
This, this would be all Ameren customers?
Correct.
And she's right, so, so there'll be a solar farm, and then you sort of buy a subscription. There's some way that they calculate how much you're gonna save on your utility. So there will be actually issued two bills. A bill from Ameren, and then a bill for whatever the subscription is. The projection is that each household should save up to 30% on their utility if they do subscribe to, to the, to the solar energy. So our approach, and then they're also looking at households that are, I believe it's 200% of poverty and below, which is the same population that we target for the weatherization program that Lisa provided a report on. So in our thinking internally, I think if we target households that we are providing weatherization to, and then they also subscribe to the solar, our hope is that they will save, I'm not gonna say significantly, but they will save a considerable amount of their income that would have been going towards utilities and they can use for other purposes. It's a, it's a new idea. This also came out of the Future Energy Jobs Act. So it hasn't really been done this way elsewhere, but they've targeted, is it Champaign and Urbana, or just Urbana?
I don't, they didn't, they're gonna, they definitely want to work with us. They, they weren't clear that they were targeting any specific...
Yeah. So as, as we learn more, I think we'll, we'll share more of that information with, with the commissioners to see if there's other areas that they will be considering to focus on.
I, I think particularly what, you know, we did just have this meeting earlier this week, and I think we're beginning to kind of reflect on it and think about ways we could partner with them and how we might impact Champaign County. Because essentially, there's 1,000 households that could be subscribed into this. So I think we need to come up with a way that we can reach individuals that this would impact and successfully impact. I think there's a very special niche, because it is a second bill, so the ability to, to pay the bill ongoing. So we don't want to set anybody up for failure. So I think there's some materials that we want to review and then propose ideas that we could impact the individuals across the county.
Yeah, the reason I ask is because solar, I just came from the American Public Utilities Association National Conference in DC. And solar has really taken off, especially in California and other, in Texas, Arizona, places like that. And it's actually having an effect on monthly incomes, whilst also having an effect on infrastructure costs as well. So it, it goes both ways. And I can see where a company like Ameren now has created a revenue stream to support their solar system by allocating 1,000 homes. And I'm just, it's, it's to their advantage, and it's to the consumer's advantage. It's a win-win all the way around, okay? So to like to see something like that grow. We've got a solar field in Rantoul. It gets, 1,000 kilowatt-hours or something of that nature through IMEA. And that might be something that IMEA will also be interested in looking at a program like that as well. Because that takes power off the grid as well.
Thanks, Chuck. All right, anything else for Lisa? All right, Ms. Rita?
Good morning, everyone. You have on your packet for review the proposed membership fees for fiscal year '21. As I explained on the memo, we are not increasing the fees at this time. What I did was to use the most recent population data from the American Community Survey, which impacted how the fees are distributed. In that regard, the City of Champaign will have a little bit of increase as well as the City of Urbana and the county. But all the other municipalities will see small decrease on the fees. And it's not that significant at all. We presented this information to the RPC Technical Committee, and there were no concerns. And I already sent this information to the City of Champaign, because they requested a long time ago. Also with the packet, I have the proposed fiscal year '21 membership work plan. This is a plan that was discussed with the members of the RPC Technical Committee. There are no significant changes on the allocation of the hours to the different tasks. One important thing that I should mention is under the research project, the 500 hours that we have allocated for that, we have been in discussions about doing an urban project and doing a rural project. And finally, finally, right? We came up to an agreement. Then what we'll be doing with that funding is at this time, we are preparing a grant application through IDOT to do a full inventory of line uses in the Champaign-Urbana-Savoy area. The reason for that is that we here work with all the communities, and when we try to work with them on line use, there is no consistency on how the line use data is collected. Then, and at the same time, the municipalities don't have updated data regarding line uses in the community. Then our proposal to the planning directors, we met with the planning directors of each of these municipalities, was to apply for this funding through IDOT. Hopefully, we'll get the funding. And the local match to pay for the grant will come from the membership, membership funding. And they were very grateful for that. Then we are in the process of preparing that proposal. And the end goal of that proposal will be that we'll have a web-based tool that the municipalities can use to enter all the data when they approve permits, any kind of permit, residential permit, commercial permits, and all that, that anyone can access, that all the information will be there and will be consistent throughout all the agencies in the urban area. Our goal also is, after doing this for the urban area, we'll be expanding this project to do it in the small communities like Rantoul, Mohammed, and St. Joe, the same way that we have done it for the sidewalk inventory. That's that. Then the membership budget and scope of services is for... Uh, then, uh, the members, membership budget and scope of services is for you to review, um, ask questions, provide comments, and then, uh, if I don't receive any comments, questions, then the idea will be to approve it at the next, uh, RPC Board meeting. Do you have anything to add? Because Tammy is a member of both, the technical and the RPC Board.
Tammy, you have anything?
I don't really have anything for, they do a great, they do a great job with, uh, their projects and keeping us informed and, uh, it's always great. All of us that sit on that appreciate the work they do, so.
All right, questions, comments?
I have more. I have more because this was the RPC. This is the RPC membership only. Uh, also, I want to give you an update on the census. Uh, I put this packet in front of you. This is the packet that will be distributing tomorrow at Lincoln Square Mall at the Read Across America event. We are expecting more than 1,000 families attending. Uh, that event will be partnering with HeadStar. Uh, the idea will be to distribute information about the census at that event. As you can see here, uh, we developed this, uh, card here on, using four different languages, the most languages that are spoken here in Champaign County, just to make people aware of what to do once they receive the first letter from the census. Uh, aside from that, I also want to make you aware that, um, if you look for information about the census, you will be overwhelmed. Then, uh, the group of people working on the census here decided to develop a local website where you can find information about the census. We have all the information here about the census. What is the census? Simplify information that people can understand better, uh, what is going on here, what is the goal, what is our vision? Uh, if they need additional information, who they should contact, and this is the person from, uh, the Public Health District that, uh, was the agency receiving the funding to do the outreach in, uh, Champaign County. I also want to talk to you about the assistant hubs. We'll be starting this, uh, we'll have the trial run next week. Our idea is that we'll have at different locations in Champaign County, staff person with a laptop or a computer, a printer, and a phone who can help anyone throughout Champaign County to fill out the form. Then there are several locations. We are hoping to have one here at the entrance of, uh, the building. Then there will be, uh, several locations that we'll have on campus, libraries, several places to help people, uh, fill out the form. And we'll be identified, uh, with something like, "Do you need assistance with the census?" That will be the idea. Then we'll have, um, here the information about, we are still working on getting people recruited for those places, but we have the YMCA, Regional Planning Commission, City of Urbana City Building, Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, the Urbana Free Library, the City of Champaign City Building, and we'll keep adding more information to this that people, uh, will know where to go if they need any information. And also, we have a calendar that shows the different events that we'll be attending, uh, just in case people need help, uh, with the census. Then, uh, we are everywhere, I could say. At this time, we attended the, uh, Parent Teacher Conference for HeadStar. We have a staff person at each of the sites, talking about the census, educating people, and distributing this book that parents can read to the children regarding the census because one of the underserved, uh, group, one of the groups that were under counted in the last census was the population zero to five. Usually, parents don't include children zero to five in the census form, then educating them that it is important to include, uh, children, all the children that they have. We'll be attending several events everywhere. We are still looking for, uh, hiring more people because we need help. Then, any questions about the census, please feel free to ask us.
Anna.
Do you, who's, um, staffing the hubs?
The staff from the different agencies.
So it's not part of the census workers that are being paid $20? You can't use that money for that?
The, the census staff, the federal workers from the census, they basically provide assistance to us on responding questions and those kind of things at this time. And then once, uh, the time has passed for filling out the form, they were, they, they will be the ones knocking at doors, asking people to fill out the form or help them filling out the form. But at this time, we are the ones doing that work with the money allocated from the state.
So our city staff, which we got some of the money, so our city staff will be basically reimbursed for?
For that work, yes.
The one in the lobby and the same thing with the library, okay.
Tammy?
I was just gonna mention, I had my office manager call in, Chuck, because I thought, even though I'm personally, because I don't think we'll have a huge swarm of people needing the assistance, but I personally was thinking of my senior citizens in the community. So I was going to just, um, and I, I know she got the information because she said, "I have it," and I just haven't had time to sit down and talk to her about it. But, um, I, I'm planning on doing a, a couple of local things in St. Joe, like at our municipal building or even, uh, with a couple of our seniors' events. They probably can go and a couple of things at our office or there in our, where we meet. And I just thought that would be a good opportunity to, to have a, uh, set up something so that any of those who are intimidated with their computers, I mean, some of them are quite computer savvy, better than I am, but, um, that it would be helpful to a lot of those. And I, actually, can, can I, can we grab a couple of these books to bring with us today?
Yeah, I have more here.
Because I, I know I'm, um, reading today at our grade school for the, leading into the reading, um, literacy week next week, I think it is. Anyway, but, you know, I'm thinking to, you know, handing these out in our community through the Parent Teacher Association and, um, you know, to the schools so that they can, especially next week, maybe do some reading with this, so.
We are requesting books in different languages. They haven't arrived yet, but we are in the process of doing all that, requesting books in different languages too, not just in English.
Yes, Chuck.
Are you making any arrangements with Rantoul? I'm not, um, I'm not in the loop on this one.
We had a meeting last, this week actually, uh, with Michelle Ramach, and it was about the Rantoul Transportation Plan and the several other school plans. Then, uh, we already have scheduled public meetings for the final phase of the Rantoul Transportation Plan and the several other school plans. Then we are planning to have, uh, one public meeting for the whole community at the middle school, but also for the several other school plans will be at each school, uh, talking about the several other school plans, but we also have information about the census there, and we'll be answering questions, and we'll have a computer to help people and all that. We are doing all that in Rantoul too. And we gave Michelle several books too.
We did, okay.
Yeah.
Goodness, I missed you.
All right, that's fine. Yeah, I was gonna ask a little bit about, you were commenting that there had been some confusion in past census collections that, um, to count, uh, young children from zero to five. How did that, how did that evolve or what was the issue with that? Were they not considered to be a census countered?
People didn't think that they should include children zero to five on the form when they fill out the form because...
Was there, were they directed not to?
No, it's just, it was a misunderstanding from people. Then what we are trying to convey to them is that everybody counts, that they need to include, even if the child was born April 1st, you need to include that person.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there posters for, in, so that parents can see them coming and going from every elementary school, every school?
We are working with the schools too. Uh, we have a Complete Count Committee that includes people from the both school districts. We are actually attending an event at the, um, Urbana School District next week, where we'll be talking about the census and all that. Then, on the Complete Count Committee, we have representation from the, both the school districts, we have representation from the libraries, we have representation from every agency in the community. It's a large group. Then we are trying to have information in all those places, and the intention is to have a hub in all those locations.
Okay. Yes, Anna.
I just had a question. You mentioned that, um, like, we are doing the hub hiring, right? Like, so is that something that is already, like, posted somewhere so we could?
We have posted that, uh, position several times. I haven't been able to recruit a lot of people because I'm looking for people who are bilingual, mainly. Uh, we have someone who speaks, uh, Spanish, someone who speaks, uh, Arabic, someone who speaks, speaks, um, Chinese, but I haven't, for example, to hire someone who speaks French. And I send the post to the university, uh, the language department all over the places, and I haven't been able to hire someone. Because people ask for the schedule, and the schedule, the schedule is unpredictable because if St. Joe called me and say, "Hey, I need help here from this time to this time," then I need to rely on the people that I have. Then sometimes it's at night, sometimes it's the evening, sometimes it's in the morning, sometimes it's, tomorrow will be the whole day at Lincoln Square Mall, and students are not really willing to do that. Well, it's difficult for them to do that.
Two things here, um, well, about the French. Uh, there's a large, uh, French-speaking, Cognolais, uh, community in here in Urbana and Champaign. And I know that a lot of the students attend, um, let's see, what school are they attending? I can't remember.
They are attending Parkland, the students.
No, I'm not thinking about Parkland though.
Yankee Ridge, yes.
Right. And, um, so, and, uh, there is a French, French-speaking, uh, class being taught at the Urbana Free Library right now. So the fellow who's doing that is John, um, I, I only met him once, so I don't remember his last name, but, um, he would be a connection to, I think, into that community, who was, perhaps, really a great place to tap if you speak.
Yeah, and, uh, Urbana Education is part of the Complete Count Committee. Uh, the difficulty that we have is having a French-speaking person who we can send to all these different events. That's the difficulty. We are going to those places too, but having that person available to go to St. Joe, to go to Rantoul if needed, to go to all those places. The main difficulty is that people who are available are not authorized to work, and the people who are authorized to work, they are students, and they don't have the time. Then it's difficult.
And then, and then where, where will students register? At the campus area where they live, or are they being also encouraged to choose to?
They, they have, when they do the census form, they have to do the census, complete the census form at the place where they are living on April 1st and where they spend most of the time, that all the students have to do it here.
Here at the university.
Yes, and the university is part of the Complete Count Committee. They know that, we have been working with them, and the students are counting a different way as, uh, uh, population quarters. Uh, the, the census has a different approach for counting them.
I see.
Working directly with the university and the resident halls and all that. The same case for the, uh, homeless, for a large group of population.
Okay.
But now you know about the website regarding events, regarding any information, everything is in there.
Rita?
Yes.
How many people are you guys looking to hire? I know you said you're primarily looking for French-speaking now, but do you have a number of?
I would like to have at least two more people helping us, um, and looking for another person who speaks Spanish because I'm doing most of the work, and someone who speaks French.
How much, how much does it pay?
$15. Uh, aside from that, um, I want to let you know that, um, the USDAOT Department put out a call for projects last, um, December, and we applied for that funding. We were notified that we passed the Phase One of, uh, that grant funding. We applied to do, basically, uh, develop, convert methodology that was developed by Federal Highway to estimate, uh, location of high-risk, uh, safety, uh, segments. And we are, uh, applying to make that, uh, web-based, uh, tool that can be used by anyone in the United States. Uh, we got a lot of support from IDOT for that project, and the Champaign County Highway Department put, uh, $25,000 as a local match, even though the grant didn't need local match, uh, it was encouraged to put some local match into it. Then, uh, we're waiting to see what happened with that. But at the same time, I received a phone call from IDOT yesterday asking or encouraging us to submit this proposal to be funded by them in case that we don't get the funding from the USDAOT. Then, we'll see what happens. Along with that, we are also, uh, at this time, working on other five different grant proposals, uh, through the Illinois State, uh, through the IDOT, uh, State Planning and Research Funds. We are putting a proposal on behalf of the City of Urbana for doing a corridor study on Florida Avenue between Lincoln Avenue and Vine Street. We are submitting the grant that I just mentioned. Uh, we are also submitting a grant to do detailed traffic safety studies on the top 20 locations that we identify through the Champaign County Rural Area Safety Plan and Champaign-Urbana Safety Plan to do detailed studies at those locations. Uh, we are doing, uh, another grant application for completing Phase Two of the Champaign County Environmental Framework. And we are also applying for a transportation equity grant and the line use grant that I mentioned that will be using the RPC membership funds as local match for those grants. Then, uh, staff is in full force writing those six grant applications that we need to submit by March 13th at this time, and let's see what we get from the six that we'll be submitting. Any questions?
And that's all you, of your report? You always have, excellent, excellent. All right, um, do I have a motion to accept and place on file the Division Updates for Fiscal, Human Resources, Community Services, and Planning and Community Development? Is there a motion?
Oh, yeah, there is a motion.
Okay, second by Steve. Uh, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. All right, CEO, Management Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Just to tie onto the census report that was provided, um, I mean, obviously, the work that we're doing is to help, um, get to the hard-to-count population. Most of the programs that we operate here at RPC that are in the Community Services Division as well as the Early Childhood Division, uh, rely heavily on census information. Uh, we have programs that have, uh, the qualifying, um, factor is actually household income, and that's information that we get from, uh, the census. So for instance, with our LAHE program, um, we serve, uh, up to 150% of population, which means like a household of four making an income of about $35,000, $36,000 a year. Um, one of the things that we're looking at statewide is to work with the General Assembly to, uh, increase that eligibility level because with the, uh, minimum wage being, uh, increased gradually, one of the things that we are concerned about is most of these households that we assist with programs like LAHE may end up being above the threshold for, uh, receiving those benefits, but still would be in a situation where they're unable to afford, uh, the utilities. Currently, there are a lot of households above 150% of poverty, going even all the way up to 200%, if not even 300%, that struggle to afford their utilities. Most studies will show that average households pay anywhere below 4% of their income towards the utilities, while, uh, households of low income will pay anywhere up to 30% of their income towards utilities. And so, we are working as a statewide coalition to try and get, um, legislation passed through the General Assembly so that we can have, or the state can have the flexibility to increase that eligibility level based on the availability of resources. And so that's one of the things that, uh, we'll be working with others. The other thing to tie onto the- The other thing to tie on to the report that Lisa provided regarding the solar initiative, it's not only going to be limited to households. There will be opportunities for nonprofit organizations, public entities such as ours, to actually apply for those opportunities, so we could have Head Start facilities, for instance, be part of that solar initiative to help us reduce our energy burden by subscribing to those services. The other thing that I've reported on previously is that we have been in discussions... We're not ready to bring this for approval yet, but we have been in discussions with the City of Champaign, as well as Unit 4, on a youth initiative. There would be the potential, I think, down the road of other communities if they have the resources to do this, but this will be focusing on youth that have been identified through the school district that are experiencing some challenges, and it would be an opportunity for there to be more of a wraparound approach to not only focusing on the youth, but the family as a whole. So, this is a model that I think the city and the school district is replicating from other communities that have done this, and so we are in discussions with them to potentially house that initiative here at the Regional Planning Commission. But once we've come to some agreement, we'll obviously bring that to the Commissioners for approval. The two respective... The school board, as well as the city council, have not voted on this, so we're not ready to even bring that to you for consideration. The last thing, just as an FYI, we're hopeful that by the time we have the next RPC meeting, we'll have updated technology in this room, next meeting. So, new microphones and hopefully...
That's right.
New microphones and, you know, a new projector, just, you know, state-of-the-art, so that we can have our meetings flow effectively. With that said, as you can tell, we have a lot going on, and it's just two months into the year, but we're looking forward to continuing our efforts throughout, not just Champaign County, but as you know, we're in 14 other counties. So, thank you.
All right, any questions for Dr. Sulemoil? All right, seeing none, is there any old business? Seeing none, is there any new business? Yes, Steve.
Just a question, maybe Sulemoil can help with this. It's a process question with regard to our emergency meeting on the 20th. In terms of the genesis of a meeting like that, is that requested by RPC execs? Is that requested by Commissioners? What was the genesis of that meeting?
So, that request came from the Chair and the other mayors, and particularly, I think, most of the mayors we have on the commission have Head Start facilities in their jurisdictions, and so the request for the meeting was more to kind of understand what the Commissioners could do to advocate on behalf of RPC, and that really was the purpose for that meeting.
I was just curious how a meeting of such would be called in terms of process, so thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments or questions?
Just out of that meeting, I know that we wanted some things to happen, and one of the questions was the vagueness that you kept receiving as the date were the 2018... You know, did we get any more specific, or are we still, like, maybe? Nothing?
We don't have a date yet. We've requested a date, we don't have one.
Was the request made to Baker Tilly?
I think Delitzos sent an email to George, I don't know, a couple weeks ago or a week ago. I'm not quite sure what the date was.
Yeah, there was an email from the county auditor yesterday. Did he send it yesterday? I saw it this morning, yesterday. Basically, I think it's to all the Commissioners, so if you haven't received it, we'll be happy to forward that to you. But I believe in that email, he's addressing some of the discussions that were held at that special meeting on the 20th, but also that the communication from Baker Tilly to the county auditor's office indicated that this would be a clean audit. I do want to say, though, that... And that is good to know that, but that I think the issue that we have been more concerned with has been the completion of it. And so, the... In terms of the question, as far as what our response is to the feds, we... I mean, if we are going to give them a response, it is to say, "We expect it to be completed in the next few weeks," but we don't have a definitive date from Baker Tilly or anybody.
It's in the hands of Baker Tilly since the 13th, correct? I believe that's...
Do you know the date?
That lines with George's comment.
I don't know that. Do you know when this?
I think that's in George's email from yesterday, I believe. They've had it for some time.
Tammy.
I found... I read is the email that he sent, which I found very unsatisfying as far as giving us the answers we needed, but I thought was very concerning also in reading over the minutes that we had for our minutes here on what was told to us in December that seemed very absolute, like, "Yes, yes, yes, we have this done, this will be done December 13th, and this is all done." And as we know, absolutely none of that felt to be true, and I'm not saying it was George's fault because it wasn't true, but I find it a little concerning now. We're still looking for answers, and we get this email, which I, you know, didn't really find any answers in the email either, and I'm thinking, "Okay, well, back in December, you said this, and now here we are in March, and I'm reading the minutes on what was said in December, and I'm reading your email today," and so I don't know what to believe as where we're at, and I mean, you know, I'm just sitting here, and I, you know, like I said, I don't do Betty's job, and I don't know how these grants and the risk that we are with these grants. I mean, from the information that we had last week, I find it very concerning where we're at with these grants and the repercussions that we could receive by not doing our part and still not getting the answers. I am personally just very frustrated with the whole entire situation and just not seeing where we're going, so.
Yes, Steve.
I did email Mr. Downus this morning and caught him. He indicated he would be happy to meet here. He had a conflict with a conference that he was attending, but he would be happy to meet at the Commissioner's discretion to have further conversation, perhaps answer your questions. But it does appear that it's been in the hands of the auditors since the 13th, and that would mean it would be out of the hands of both Mr. Downus's office and Treasury.
And I think the frustrating thing, I think, was that Mr. Goss said that the auditor then is, you know, we're expecting them to then carve out time to deal with it when they already had a carve-out time, as I had understood that. So, that means that, you know, assessing blame there has to, you know, is probably not wise.
Well, in terms of our brainstorming from the 20th as to how to expedite this, it seems rather moot point if it's already out of the auditor's office and in the hands of the external auditors. I don't see where brainstorming and additional pressure is going to change anything that Baker Tilly does. Excuse me for the time length thereof.
True, and I guess just for, you know, just truth, overall truth for the public, just so that they know in terms of... I found that quite interesting, that, okay, we can't just say it's Baker Tilly now. We have to remind people that they... There was a time for it to happen, and so then they have to carve out time. So, just passing... And again, I'm not your messenger, passing the buck is probably not someplace we want to go. Anything else before us? All right, seeing none, I will declare us adjourned.